I'd like to give them a real close.
All right, we're gonna start, yes? We're good? Okay, uh, well, I already called order the Gladstone City Council. We did an executive session. This is the special meeting slash work session at 6:00 PM. We're now going to move to the joint work session with the Planning Commission. And we might as well do intros around the table.
Tammy Semple, Planning Commission Chair.
David Newton, City Attorney's Office.
Kim Sickman, City Council.
Tom McMahon, City Council.
Kirk Semple, Planning.
Dominic Jacobellis, Mayor.
Pete Boyce, City Administrator.
Wes Poole, Planning Commissioner.
Steve Johnson, City Council.
Alcide Alfou, Planning Commissioner.
Tom Mercer, City Councilor.
Neil Reisner, City Council.
Okay. Pete, you gonna start us?
I was not.
Okay, well, all right, all right.
I will start.
Chair of the Planning Commission, please start us.
The reason that I asked for this joint work session is that we're going to be applying for code assistance from Oregon DLCD to help do a once-over, real in-depth review of our codes. The Planning Commission was charged to do that quite some time ago, but we've kind of been floundering, I think mostly because of the transition between council and mayor, and also the fact that we'd never done this before. So, Jolene and I reached out to Karen Buell with DLCD, and they have the code assistance grant available to us, where they will come in, review them for us with the parameters that we set, and then come to us with recommendations. We don't have to accept the recommendations, but I think letting someone that does this for a living help us in this will put us five steps ahead of where we are right now. So during the last Planning Commission meeting, we went over what we feel are guidance recommendations that we'd like to give to Karen, or Laura, excuse me. And I sent copies to everybody through Tammy Bannick, and I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at them or not, but I'll go through them. First was this assessment must tie together the current grant applications of the TGM Transportation System Plan, the TGM Portland Avenue Refinement Plan, and the CPDG Gladstone Downtown Revitalization Plan that must support the current mission, vision, and value statements. We will look at the creation of unique commercial zones. Portland Avenue, for instance, possibly creating some subzones where we encourage mixed use along Portland Avenue. 82nd Avenue from the overpass to the river, possibly mixed use. And then the McLaughlin Corridor, instead of having those all lumped together as one commercial zone. Possibly create an incentive encouragement program to promote wanted types of development. Also residential infill aesthetics should be addressed, possibly the creation of neighborhoods, sense of place type neighborhoods, unique neighborhoods with varied requirements. Multi-family allowances, the need to review where multi-family development would fit best. Encouragement of multimodal transportation, which is pedestrian, bicycle, mass transit, create an integrated, connected south safe route for citizens to easily access mass transit by walking or biking. Create safety for our students to get to school, sidewalks, dedicated paths, et cetera. They use various documents in their review. I know the smart codes seem to kind of be an issue for some people, but that isn't the only thing that they look at. They look at what we're requiring, and then they find the models that fit. So, anybody have any questions?
Regarding the second bullet, the current mission, vision, and value statement, I was just curious, are those current and to date?
I think you guys just re-adopted them at a recent Budget Committee meeting.
Yeah, they are in the budget document as shown in the packets. At the last city council retreat, decided, you know, they're okay now, and we'll move on later. But, yeah, that's on the books right now.
Do you guys get along with the government and the following? If there are any modifications, I'd love to hear that.
I don't know if councillors have an opinion. Do they want to rework those, or?
Well, quite frankly, when they came out in the Budget Committee hearing, I mean, they're pretty archaic. I mean, let's be honest. But the reality is, is where are we putting our energy? I mean, there's, to do this is an undertaking, and we have like 57 other things on our plate. There's no way I can get to this, and I don't think any of the councillors can. I mean, it really needs to be updated. I mean, it's just like all of our plans.
Oh, the code.
No, the mission, vision, guidance.
Oh, the mission, vision, oh, yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, unfortunately, folks, the reality is, is we just can't do it.
And I think we discussed that in our retreat in the beginning, and we felt that it was broad enough that what is going to happen in the future could be fit in there because it's, it is very broad. It probably could be reworked, but is it the highest on the priority list right now? Do you think that, do you think the mission and value statement is going, the way it's written, will limit?
No, not at all.
Then to me, that says...
No, in fact, I think the way it's written now is the best way.
I share the same thought, because I own property in Damascus and a couple other places, and we can get preoccupied with the fine points of a statement that really, we start to rely too much on it. We start thinking that this is, you know, we're honing it in, and we end up with something that we, we find conflict with because too much emphasis is placed on it instead of how we're interpreting the basic message of that. And that's just been my experience. We could beat the thing to death, and in the end, how much we're changing the language really affect the outcome of what we do. And I'm presenting that as a question and a statement.
Well, I almost, I just disagreed to a point where I think at some point in time when we can take a breath, they need to be updated. They need to be looked at, they need to be reworked, they need to be, everybody needs to have a piece in that puzzle, so we have something that we can rely on and say, this is kind of where we're going, this is what we believe in, this is where we're headed. But at this point in time, if it's not detrimental to what we're trying to do with the grant, then I, I don't think we can spend the time on it. But I think it needs to be done.
Mm-hmm. Not a high priority.
I got a question. I like this, I really do. The question I've got is, it sounds like we're gonna just hand off information to them, and they're gonna come back with a recommendation. Is there any way that the Planning Commission can be involved in this throughout the process?
Yes.
Or are they already?
Yeah, we'll make sure that we are.
Okay, 'cause that, I'm going, okay, we just give them this information, then they come back with this, and we go, whoa, that really wasn't what we was thinking.
No, there'll be definite conversations as we move through with this.
My, my experience with it, too, is that they generally do it in stages. So they'll say, okay, you know, so part of the work task for the program will be, we're gonna look at these things first, then we'll come back and say, here's some recommendations, you can look at that, you can decide, you know, so it's not just...
You're gonna see a direction they're heading.
Sort of, yeah, sort of not just like, here it is, you know?
Yeah.
The other, the other question I had was the, uh, down towards the bottom, create, possibly create, incentive encouragement programs to promote wanted types of development. There it is, residential infill aesthetics to be addressed, possible creation of neighborhoods with varied requirements. When I think about our city, we're fairly well-established, and it's not that we couldn't do things, but if you take the R5 areas, predominantly older homes, they wouldn't be coming in and go, okay, well, we're gonna change this section over here.
No, it was more addressing duplexes, triplexes, where that's appropriate. And that would be an aesthetic-driven type of area. And then, kind of setting that area up as a neighborhood-ish. And I don't know where all they're allowed right now, because they seem to be going up everywhere, but that's, yeah, that's one of the things. And, and there's a difference. There's, you know, if you get up on the hill, there's a different look, a different feel of the neighborhood than what it is down here, and we're real concerned with infill, and we know that's what's gonna happen. That's the future of Gladstone, is some of these older homes are gonna be torn down, and what's gonna be put in its place. And we wanna make sure that what gets put in its place fits with that area.
Perfect.
And when that happens, the grandfathered code doesn't apply anymore, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, done it up just on the street, maybe didn't have to put in a sidewalk. And, 'cause that's what's happening, too, is larger lots are being divided, like, say, infill. So how involved is your firm in this? Is it, you know, during the process, or after, when, 'cause you're gonna have to, 'cause you guys are gonna have to sign off of anything on this.
Yeah, I mean, every, you know, you might imagine with our client base, we've seen a few of these before, and every client has a sort of a different take on that. I mean, but generally speaking, I think it works best if, you know, we review at the same time that, in this case, the Planning Commission might look at.
And lump, to try and minimize the cost.
Yeah. Rather than, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be involved on a day-to-day basis, I can tell you that. And I think it's much better to have some involvement before it's just, okay, this is what everybody, now that we've got all these chunks, everybody likes it, legal, take a look at it. Because the last thing you'd want is to have something that is wrong here, that depends on something over here, and, you know.
Yeah.
I didn't know. So that's, that's how I think, I'd see it going.
And one thing on this creation of neighborhoods, so clearly identifying maybe some, you know, Quentin neighborhood, or, you know, whatever, McLaughlin neighborhood, or River, you know...
That's what we would like.
It would, yeah, I, yeah, that needs to be done, so.
Yeah. I agree.
Gonna have control over keeping this from being like Division Street in Portland with zero parking, and, you know, sidewalk to building, and...
This is ours. I mean, they will give us recommendation, and there will be dialogue, so we will make sure that the way this is driven meets our needs.
And the information they're requesting to get started will come from the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Yep. Is it done yet?
And I'm sorry that it's taken us so long to even get to this point. It's just not having ever done a code review to the extent that we were tasked, where do you start? I mean, it's, how long did it take us just to do the telecommunications piece? You know, so...
Not done yet.
I know, we're not quite even done yet, but, um, yes, and these are big, these are Title 17, these are, these are big, big things. So I appreciate that you guys are even allowing us to take this step. And it's, again, no cost to us, it's, thanks, thank you, state authority for that.
And have we been approved for this, or have we submitted for it?
No, I was not gonna submit. I've been talking to her, she knows it's coming, so I needed to just confirm with you guys the direction, the parameters, so I'll write it up. She'll review it, we'll tweak it if we need to. I'm assuming then it comes back to you guys, just for a final review if you like, and then she accepts it and we move forward. So my goal is to have the first draft to her probably the second week in July, maybe, even, maybe before then.
So that, this kind of piggybacks on the conversation we had last week about whether or not it needs to come back to us.
Yes, that's what I need to find out from you guys.
So the discussion centers around the amount of work that goes in prior to is, is huge. And we just wanna make sure we're comfortable, as a city council, at this point, hearing what we need to hear, and then sending her on her way, so then later on, they come back with this, and we go, well, we really don't want that. And then they've spent a ton of time and energy trying to get this through, and then at the last minute, we're like, well, we really don't like that.
Yeah, and I don't think that's the case at all on this.
No, but I'm, I'm just saying, does, do they need to come back with this before they present it to ODOT, or whoever?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so.
We're comfortable.
According to previous questions, if we absolutely do not like it, we don't have to do anything about it.
Right, we don't have to accept the recommendations.
We don't have to adopt it, right. Okay.
And I think I answered your questions, and Tim's, so you guys feel a little bit more comfortable with...
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to initiate a public review process?
Their, mine are in the packet.
Yeah, it's part of the packet, so. And most of the changes, I think they're probably gonna be Title 17 changes, which have a public review process and a state review process, so none of it is going to be secret. It's all gonna be out and open for public comment at, you know, as we move forward, so.
I support everything you put in here. It sounds to me like everybody's at this point. I haven't seen anybody make shape their, their direction yet, so.
Thank you, Tammy.
Our best bet to get this done right.
Appreciate it.
It's a great job. You're just awesome.
Coming from my husband, thank you. He needs, he has to say that.
Don't buy us there.
They're wearing that out.
No.
Are you in the doghouse on Sunday?
No, no, no. No, no.
All right. Anything else on this work session, joint work session? Everybody good? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah. And guys, thank you for being part of the Planning Commission and the effort and time that you put in.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the Gladstone City Council. This is a special meeting of the City Council on June the 23rd, 2015, it's now 6:40, or 6:39 PM. Um, Jolene, can you do the roll call, please? Oh, okay.
Counselor Sickman?
Here.
Counselor Mercer?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Mayor Jacobellis?
Here. Could you all join me, please, for this...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to do business from the audience. We have any cards there, miss?
Kirk Semple, could you please come up?
Kirk Semple, today I'm representing Gladstone Fire Department. My address is next door. So if you look at the news lately, you see a lot of black eyes for the police department and the fire department, not so much, the fire department, mostly the police, all over the country. It just seems like they're having issues. Go down, down there. So, so I was approached by a couple of officers, Casey Newt and Sergeant Travis Hill, about a barbecue on 4th of July during the day. And they, it's a police thing, and they want the fire department to be involved. Basically, what it is, is just serving some food to the community, getting to know the community, showing the police cars off, showing the fire agents off. So what I'm asking is a donation of $250 to help fund some of the food and drinks from City Council. Have any questions about what's gonna be happening? It's during the day, so it's, it's not an evening thing. So I'm looking for a $250 donation towards the police and fire barbecue.
I'd like to make a motion that we...
Mr. City Administrator, is I can find $250, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we donate $250 for the 4th of July barbecue.
Awesome.
Second?
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Sickman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Thank you, and check, you know, keep your eyes open, you're all welcome to come by and say hi, and it's gonna be a good time.
Do we have to serve food? Do we have to cook?
Nope.
Okay.
But it'd be nice, maybe, you know...
My apologies, I'll be out of town.
You know, and we're, we're trying to make this an annual thing, 'cause, you know, years past, we had the fireworks down at Melrose Bar, and it was nice.
It was.
And we just get, we gotta get in touch with the community again, so I think you guys...
For sure. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, um, Max Peters, thank you, Max Peters, Department.
Eleven to two.
Eleven to two-ish.
You, you, you guys hitting all the media, Facebook and this there?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Twitting and tweeting and...
Do all of that stuff.
All the Twitter.
Please, do all of that.
All right. Anybody, any, anyone else there? Any other cards?
No.
No other cards, no other business, some of the audience. Item number two in our agenda, we were, we were gonna recess to, with Park and Rec, but that has been scratched, item number two has been scratched, so we're moving down. There's nothing in the consent agenda, we're down to correspondence. There's a letter from Mr. Jerry Herman. I'd like to have a little discussion about that if I could. Okay. I mean, anybody opposed to that? Okay.
So I'm, I guess, I've talked to Jerry over the last couple weeks, he's reached out to me. I guess I would ask and to see what the City Council feels about maybe extending it three months to give him the time to move. And I'm just bringing that up, I'd like to know what the rest of the City Council, if they have opinions one way or the other, and then we'll move forward on it.
What does our insurance agent and our attorney think of that?
Can't speak for the insurance agent. You know, you have certainly the right to do that. I, I think the liabilities that are present there are, are real. I mean, they aren't, you know, to be ignored. As far as I know, they've, they've done a decent job of, of sort of addressing those, or at least being aware of them. I, I don't think it would be a huge risk from a legal point of view to, to extend that for another amount of time to, to address some of the issues that are in the letter. The insurance piece, I do think is, I know that's been mentioned in here as well, that he's looking at, trying to make sure that's covered, or maintain that insurance. That would be certainly necessary, but I, I don't, I don't see, from a legal point of view, a big risk.
So I guess my question, and I should have asked months ago when this first came up, I guess, so the liability issue, what is that in particular? Is there something in particular? Is it because we think water's gonna leak out from the collector, or is it more of something that might happen?
Well, there's structural, there's some pretty, as I understand it, some structural issues that, that exist there. So, yeah, I think it has to do with, with, you know...
Oil getting in the river from whatever is in the, the collector pump? Or is it more having to do with the liability of the land surrounding that, or...
I think it's a little bit of both. I also think that there's, you know, just concern about, I mean, you've got, you know, sort of an educational, you've got presumably some kids that are there. I think it's a, it's a combination of, of the status and sort of the state of the site, and the desire to, you know, in the long run, obviously, not have those things present. I don't, but again, I don't think it's something that is, I've never viewed it as an overwhelming, my gosh, you know, this has to be dealt with yesterday. It's one of those things, like a lot of infrastructure, where, yeah, there's some, some problems, but, you know, factually, is there something I'm sort of missing here?
No, and, you know, the concern is the liability overall, you know, the activities that are taking place there, the structure, everything. Mr. Herman's indicated to me, and I've spoken with his insurance carrier, that he can provide additional insurance to help alleviate some of the city's concerns. You know, I, I think we can offer him an extension, and in addition, get the additional liability insurance. I don't, I don't see...
What level of liability insurance is it at now?
I believe, yeah, $1 million liability insurance, he's talking about going to $2 million.
We just reinsured the facility again, because it's due this week, so we'd like to pair that.
My, my understanding is that, you know, I'm getting this second and third hand, that one of the drivers of this is our insurance, our insurance agent, our insurance company, is that true?
They have brought up a concern that, you know, it's a use that isn't typical of city facilities, and I, I think that's the driving factor behind their opinion that, you know, it's just something we want to engage in.
So can our insurance agent company and Mr. Herman's agent and company speak with each other and come to some understanding?
I don't see why not.
Because I, I'd like to hear from our agent that it's okey-dokey, and that he's okay with it. Does that, that make sense? But this is, this, Pete, if I'm not mistaken, this was more than just one time saying this is an issue. This has been ongoing, and they have sent several emails saying, you need to fix this. Correct, or not?
Correct. That is correct. It's, it's been an ongoing use for some time. There was some confusion about the lease. What I hear from City Attorney Abma is that the old lease did have an additional term of five years, which we believe have lapsed now, but it does go on, on a 30-day basis from this point on. So there is a lease in place, but it's basically month to month at this point.
Have they been notified, and if so, do we know when that was? How long have they had so far that they've...
When did we write the initial letter?
When were they notified that they probably needed to leave?
Well, I've been talking to Mr. Herman since the beginning of the water master plan. The previous mayor indicated that he wanted to wait until that master plan was complete before we did anything with the property. But Mr. Herman didn't have any solid set dates. It was wide open. We gave him a set date, I believe, maybe a month or two ago. I'd have to look at the date on the initial letter.
Scott Tabor, Public Works Supervisor, I'd like to address Mr. McMahon's concerns about any contamination leaking out of that. There is no possible way for anything hazardous to leak out. When that was originally decommissioned, all the infiltration laterals valves were closed, so there's no way for water to enter the gallery or exit the gallery at this time, at this time.
Thank you. Well, gentlemen, I mean, this is the same discussion in, in part of what we said when we talked about the insurance company saying not to close this street off, to close this street off. And the question is asked, if we're gonna go outside of what the insurance company is telling us not to do, there is a risk involved. And we just need to make a decision. Is everybody counsel saying, oh, it's okay, just because they told us it's not good, we're just gonna move on? I believe Mr. Herman's been notified ample, you know, an ample amount of time, we're not asking him leaving 30 days. I believe the discussion started in earnest when we had the meeting back in February, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know when the letter was sent, but certainly he was made aware of it. And we're just prolonging it, you know, that, in my mind.
Am I allowed to speak?
You, are you gonna take up your three minutes now, or do you wanna come back?
Well, if I'm not allowed to speak, then I won't speak. But I received notice formally one month ago, and the terms are to be out by July 30th. It's the first time I've ever received notice, ever. In March 10th, when we came before you at 10...
Come to the mic, um, please.
On March 10th, when we came before you to speak, I brought people that support what we're doing, that's all I did, was let you know what we did. I had no notice, no notification of anything pending going on. I am aware that the waterfront master, water master plan was being considered for adoption once it was adopted. Pete did tell me by at least February or so, that it looks like we're gonna have to do something to decommission this, be prepared, but I never knew what be prepared was. Meantime, I was trying to figure out a way, to be honest with you, to acquire the site. Oregon City has an interest in it, too. We work heavily with Oregon City on our projects, so what I've been doing for the last four months is trying to figure out a way to, one, keep our operation going, and do the service work we do for you and the other communities involved. And if we could acquire the site, we'd like to do that. Figure out a way also to close it properly, so it doesn't cost you half a million dollars, which it may cost to demolish it, there's other ways to do it. I have an engineer from Oregon City, excuse me, Oregon City and Westland, two of them that are willing to help in that regard. So, and my final reason to be here was to tell you that, really, that if we have to leave by July 30th, you will, our organization will be gone, gone, because of $95,000 worth of grants that are pending right now that involve work in your community, and also in Oregon City and Westland, that we do every year. So I'm just trying to come to an accommodation, I'm negotiating with CAMB, I'll be honest with you. They're willing to give us an upper site, we like river sites. I'm going through their planning process, I'm still working with them, but I can't solve this by July 30th. That's where I'm at.
Has, has your insurance agent talked to our insurance agent?
My insurance agent has talked to your administrator, and my insurance agent and I at least purchased, I purchased the insurance to keep this at the same status of $1 million comp liability this last week, 'cause I have to do it at this time of the year.
So the answer is no? I mean, your insurance agent has not talked...
As far as I know, I don't know who to talk to.
Okay.
But we'd be happy.
I mean, is, is that a reasonable thing to ask, that happen?
Absolutely.
Sure. I mean, it's, it's, it's about liability, Mr. Herman, I mean, it's not, it's not...
Yes, absolutely, I know that.
I understand you do good works in the community and all that other stuff, but this is about liability.
Right.
And we, we are stewards of the people's money, we have to look out for it.
Right.
Our insurance agent is, is anxious about this. And, and if, if you can put his mind at ease, and he comes to us, and he says, I'm okay with it...
Sure.
then I may be all right with it. But that's the road, that's the path that I see moving forward that needs to be done.
Right. Very reasonable request. Thank you.
Can you do that?
And the comp liability, I'll just pass around, is here for you to review. Still $100,000. It's in force right now, as it is for it. It's now in force another year.
So just to give maybe Mr. Herman a heads up, and I would imagine CIS and our insurance agent are gonna point this out, that the tort claim limits in Oregon, case that came down, oh gosh, now going on 10 years, basically removed the tort liability caps that were formerly in place under Oregon law. And now, those are moving up on an annual basis. The state basically, the details as to why are very complex. But the reality is, is that now for essentially multiple claimants, if theoretically, there was an injury here, damage, et cetera, let's talk about personal injuries, that's where the cost is higher. That can, that now has a cap for essentially more than one injury, two or more people, at $1,003,6 something. So I'm sure they're gonna wanna see, at the very least, that million dollar, it depends on how it's written, but it often will be something that would be going up. And more commonly these days, we just see a $2 million, certainly in like construction projects, that kind of thing. Where you just, because eventually, they're gonna get there. And not knowing, you know, how long a project might take, et cetera. Not saying they'll be necessary here. I just throw that out because I think that's something that I would imagine CIS is part of their concern, if that is part of their concern.
Even our standard event permits, if you wanna have a function in the city, I believe the minimum liability insurance is $2 million for an event, correct?
We require the minimum for anything in a city of two. Anything. Minimum.
So that's something that would certainly be a basis for discussion, I think.
I would like to clarify the limits that we have given to you, or what we were asked to do in the lease, and that's what we've done. It's no problem. We've never had a claim in 24 years. Going to a higher level doesn't cost me that much. If it'll make you more comfortable, it's fine. Thank you.
We done with this discussion?
For now. I'd like to, so hopefully by the next general city council meeting, then we'll have an answer. And at that time, then I would like to extend it maybe to 90 days, but still then have a, no more than that.
Depending on what the insurance company says, you know, that's kind of where I'm at with it. The other thing to consider, something we need to discuss, is the fact that, and this just as an aside, I'm trying to think in my mind where we have this kind of situation, where we have basically no control over city property. We really don't have any department head, any parks and rec, any supervision to see things are getting done A, B, C, D, in line with what the city believes we should be doing from a legal standpoint, or from a liability standpoint. So, you know, just to put it all into an insurance package and still have no control over it, I have a problem with it. That's just...
What was the eviction date?
July 30th.
The next meeting's on the 14th.
So we do have, they do have time. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss here, and it was June 30th or something.
It's July 30th.
Okay.
So, yeah, we got at least one more meeting.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
All right. We are moving down to item number four, which is Resolution 1053. I think these were all kind of housekeeping things, right, Pete? If I'm not correct. Or, well, no, 53 is the line item transfers?
Right. Exactly.
I submitted a couple of questions earlier, and have a follow-up on a couple, like the... The first one, I just want to, you haven't expended any of the $300,000 out of the contingency, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, I just wanted to make sure we, so, is, so we're planning on spending the $245,000?
Well, we're planning on transferring...
Or transfer, I'm sorry. You're right. My apologies.
The expenditure appropriation to other line items.
So, and so which brings me up to another question, is we're transferring out of contingency to the other line items, but if we, more than likely, aren't gonna be spending all of that money, that just goes into next year's budget. I can't think of the wording.
Anything that is not spent in this fiscal year, that cash balance carries over to the next fiscal year.
Right. And actually, I appreciate the answers that you gave. One question I had, though, on follow-up was in regards to the police communication levy fund, where you're asking the $25,000 be transferred. Reading through the levy that was approved by the voters, it kind of spells out what positions can be used, that money can be used for, like school resource officer, K-9 program, executive assistant, code enforcement, and some police officers. Doesn't mention on-call records clerk. So can we legally spend money on a records clerk?
Some years back, I had the city attorney's office interpret the ballot measure, and I believe it was Tom Sponsler who indicated that as long as we funded those specifically, those items specifically listed in the ballot measure, other funds could be used for general police purposes.
But the money's coming, the money's coming from the levy?
Correct.
So you're saying we, say that again, because it didn't make any sense to me. Because you're saying we can spend money on other police items? Wouldn't that need to come out of general fund?
That wasn't the opinion I received from Mr. Sponsler. It was, as long as, as long as it was a legitimate expense for law enforcement, the levy funds could be used for that, provided that the school resource officer and the other items that were outlined in the ballot measure were met.
So it could be, end up coming just in all funds for the police department?
I'm not sure what's in the ballot funds.
I'm trying to use my words carefully here. So the police department can use, once those line items that are listed in the ballot measure have been funded, taken care of, any excess money can be used for any item in the police department?
That was my understanding, yes.
Yeah, all depends on what the ballot measure says as well. So I'm not, I don't even remember that opinion.
So, but the ballot measure's switched up here a couple of years ago. Is the attorney still with you?
Is Tom still with us? He does very little work for us now. He's retired.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not, that's not, I'm just, because we just renewed the levy a couple of years ago, and I know that the ballot measure was changed. So is that the same thing we can do with the fire department, then?
I didn't ask for an opinion on the fire department.
Be a matter, again, of looking at the levy language. There are some that are fairly general, you know. I mean, public safety levies that just basically say to fund police and fire services.
Right.
You know, it doesn't get into the specifics. So it just really depends upon what the measure says.
Okay. So then I guess my second question on that is in regards to, in your answer, you know, about some of the officers being interviewed by the district attorney, that could cover any of the officers, not just those that are funded by the levy?
Well, I believe what I was referring to is just the officers that were being funded by the levy, but there were other officers that were interviewed that created some overtime expense that hit the general fund also.
Okay. Thank you. That was the only questions I have.
Anybody got anything else? Any other questions?
Other than the one in the packet was at $235,000. I think it's been changed to $245,000. I'd like to hear that, that it actually happened.
It was emailed out to council, yeah.
Then I'll move that we adopt Resolution 1053.
I second that.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilor Reisner, and seconded by Councilor Mercerow. Any discussion on it? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Resolution 1053 has been adopted or meant, adopted. Item number five is the water line replacement at Barton Avenue to dead end of West Exeter Street.
Scott Tabor, Public Works Supervisor, before you've seen bid process that we had to look at replacing the AC water line that runs from Barton to the dead end of Exeter Street, we became aware of this during the excavation of Lake Oswego Water Tiger Line. The leaks that we found were not that of, caused by the process of them excavating. I could tell by the condition of the pipe and the condition of the soil around it, these have been going for quite a while. The problem with AC pipe, of course, if it doesn't come straight up and you see a visible leak going, then you really don't know it's there. One of the things we looked at is, we've been replacing all the water lines on Exeter Street in anticipation of them restoring or rebuilding all of Exeter Street. My plan was to talk with Lake Oswego. I've talked with them quite lengthly. We came up with a plan. I asked Sissel Engineering to design the plan for us. What we came up is, we have three bids that will install a six-inch ductal iron pipe all the way down there, and Lake Oswego, in shorthand, is gonna pull in $30,000. So this will basically cost us $14,000 for less, or just under 500 feet of pipe. So it's a very good bargain for us. I hope that council sees the value in this. And once it's done, then we'll be able to transfer all the old services from that AC pipe to the new ductal iron pipe, and then restoration the street. When that comes, we won't have to go back there again.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
On that street, is what other, I mean, I assume there's sewer services under there?
Yep.
Gas lines. Do we know what else is in there?
But we have sanitary sewer. There's a storm line. Northwest Natural has a gas line. They have been doing some work on their lines, but, you know, what, let me rephrase that. Once the water line is complete, the city of Gladstone should have no business opening that street back up. I can't talk for Northwest Natural Gas. Our sewer lines that we've looked at, of course, are, we've inspected them. Where the Lake Oswego water line has crossed them, some have been relocated. We've inspected those. They're in good shape. Hopefully, that we won't have to go back there. I, to guarantee it absolutely, I'm not gonna go there.
Right. Right. We just, anything that we can do...
Not foreseeable.
Okay.
As I was saying, I've noticed the last couple of days, Northwest Natural's been out working.
They've been doing some valve restoration in those areas prior to our road reconstruction at Bellevue in those areas, so yes.
So they're aware of it, and hopefully, they'll go in there and do what they need to do?
Well, that goes, I wish, yeah. I was really happy that Lake Oswego, I didn't ask them, I told them I had concerns, and they're the ones that approached me and said, "We would like to contribute $30,000 to this." I think that's very gracious, and I wouldn't turn it down.
Sorry for running us off in the weeds.
It's okay.
Anything else?
I have a question. You have three bids on this project.
Yes.
Did Oregon Underground understand the scope of this project?
Absolutely, yes. I've worked with them before. They've done projects in the past for the city of Gladstone. They've done good work. It depends on, you have to look at the bid process. We kind of went out local, went quick. Some of these people are busy. They may not have had said, "Well, if we give them this price, yay. If we don't get it, okay." So I mean, that's kind of the nature of the bidding process of them. But I have worked with Oregon Underground in several different projects.
So even though these prices are out of range, you don't have any concern at all?
I and Pat Sissel, the engineer, discussed that, and we see no issues. They've listed everything that we requested.
Very good. Thank you.
I move that we accept staff's recommendation on replacing the water main along Exeter, accepting under, Oregon Underground proposal, or bid.
And accepting the Tiger Lake Oswego...
Contribution.
Contribution.
So noted, yes.
I'll second that. Okay. So the motion was made to authorize the staff to go ahead with the bid given by Oregon Underground, and the kicker of the Lake Oswego Tiger. The motion was made by Councilor Sickman, seconded by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion, further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So you guys can do that. Item number six, Resolution 1054.
Mr. Mayor, this is some more housekeeping. Basically, we're taking my name off the bank accounts. And I would suggest that we, I left a blank under the Gladstone City Administrator. We'll need a name in the interim. We should have the interim city administrator's name, so we should add that.
Okay. So Resolution 1054 doesn't have Mr. Schultz's name in it?
Well, there's a blank. I'm suggesting we add Mr. Schultz's name.
All right. Anyone, I would entertain a motion for item, Resolution Number 1054.
I'd so move to, for the Resolution 1054, and to add Ross Schultz as the Gladstone City Administrator.
The interim, I'm sorry.
As the interim.
Just noticed one minor, it's got an adoption date of January.
Oh.
So that would just be noted for the record?
So it should be June for adoption.
So I'll move, so I'll make that motion again, that we, for Resolution 1054, that we have Ross Schultz as the interim city administrator with the adopted date of the 23rd of June 2015.
Second. Okay. Motion is made by Councilman McMahon, and seconded by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion on Resolution 1054? With the changes made? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Okay. Adopted. Oh, that was kind of weak. Adopted Resolution 1054. Item number seven, Resolution Number 1055.
Again, same deal. The 1054 was for the Oregon State Treasury. 1055 is for US Bank. Again, we need to enter Mr. Schultz's name. Effective date, July 1.
And again, it's a January adoption date.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 1055 with Ross Schultz as the interim city administrator with a approval date of the 23rd of June 2015.
Second. Okay. Motion is made by Councilman McMahon, with the changes noted, and was seconded by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting Resolution 1055?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That's been adopted. Down to item number eight, which is the interim city manager's contract. I don't see anything in my booklet.
Yeah. Well, it was emailed to us.
Oh. I saw drafts. Did we get finals?
We did. We sent that off, and I thought it had been signed, right?
Me and Mr. Schultz signed it, and Jolene's got the original, and Mr. Schultz has a copy of it.
So really, all we're doing here, I know Heather circulated some drafts. I think all of you had a chance, at least, to see those and offer any comment to Heather. But, you know, Ross began technically working yesterday. But, you know, Ross began technically working yesterday, and what this is, is just what we call ratification. So it would allow him to get paid for yesterday's work. And, you know, if there's questions about the contract, obviously, you know, want to hear that, but I, at this point, assume that really all we're talking about is a motion to ratify the executed agreement.
I so move that we ratify the agreement that was worked out.
The contract.
Yeah, the contract between the city and Mr. Schultz. Is that proper wording?
Unless there are questions, that's exactly it.
Second. Okay, motion was made by Councilors Reisner, seconded by Councilor Sickman. Any discussion on the contract? Okay, all in favor of ratifying the contract, signed by Mr. Schultz and myself?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's been ratified.
Yes, sir. I have a draft of a press release along these lines that I've had pre-approved by the attorneys. Can I have this in for consideration now, or do you want to do it business from the council? It regards our changes.
Why don't we do it from business from the council?
All right. Pretty good. Well, which is coming upon us right now?
Right now, as we speak.
Before we go.
Business from the council. Let's start down at the end with Mr.
Couple of things. Had coffee with counselor again last night. Real good attendance, probably higher than it has been the last couple of meetings. A lot of the same things, code enforcement, where are we with the library project? Pat, Neil, anything that you remember that was also brought up, other than those? Those were the main ones.
Did you mention Portland Avenue?
Oh, no, Portland Avenue redevelopment was another one. So, and the people really seem to be enjoying the process. So they come in a little wound up, and they actually leave having nice conversation, and they're comfortable, so I think it's well, I think it's going well. The other thing, couple of things is, I've been working with Comcast a little bit. The city usually provides movie in the park for the festival. And I talked to Jolene, and she, actually talked to Pete, and Pete said, Jolene, can you take care of this? I talked to Jolene, and she's going, we really got a lot going on. Is there some way you can help me with this? So I kind of took that project on, and somebody had told me that Comcast sometimes puts these sort of things on. So I contacted them, and they, nope, we don't do that. We write checks. Well, that kind of changed the process a little bit, but I'm going, I'm not opposed to taking checks. I got an email, I've kept Jolene in the loop on this, and Comcast in the next month or so will be showing up to give us a check for $1,000 for our movie in the park program. We can use it to put on multiple movies in the park. We can use it to put on one movie in the park. We can use it to buy equipment for future movies in the park. That's the biggest expense of doing them, is renting the equipment and the licensing. So if we had, if we acquire the money for the equipment through Comcast donations, whatever, we can put a lot of them on for a fairly reasonable price for many years to come. So that's, so we'll be getting a check from them here shortly. The only other thing is, is the next couple of weekends, I will be out of town, probably early Friday morning through Sunday night, and I don't know if I will have phone or email. So you can always try, but just don't guarantee, I can't guarantee a response. That's it.
I would like to suggest to the council, a few months ago, we started a council retreat, and we had a couple of sessions, and we started a cultural change, which all of us based on communication. And some of the subjects we're actively working on, but I'm suggesting an update, whether we do that in letter form and/or we have a meeting, a half a day meeting or a day meeting, whatever the council would think appropriate, to update the communication on, like the top five projects, the top three goals that the departments have and so on. If the council is interested, so be it.
Pass those down.
With apologies for catching people off-guard here, I think that some response to the press is warranted, and that we're already seeing things in print that may or may not be the reality of what happened. I decided to write something up. I know this is dry. I hope no one is offended by it. That was certainly not my intention. My intention was to tell the story of what's been going on and where we are today. There are a lot of people in our city who are not as connected to meetings and political issues, and they hear things, and I wanted to set the record straight. This was run by legal previously. I had intended to pass it out at our last meeting, but we got into the discussion of appointment versus contract, and I wanted to be careful not to jump the gun. It appears that we are now done with these issues, and I thought it would be a good idea. This is, corporations do this sort of stuff all the time. I don't know if government does, but I think it should, so that we have a common, a common story that we're telling to the press. And again, I very much apologize if it's blindsided anybody, that was not my intention.
Peter, backing on what Kim said about moving in the park, the Parks Board is interested and has offered to step up and help with that endeavor. Public Safety Met last night, unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum, so we didn't do anything official. We did chat about a couple of projects. One is a, the possibility of city having a radar van, and then maybe expanding their role. And then I got an opportunity, as Kim mentioned, to attend the, a talk with the counselor. Then also, I wanted to bring to your attention, as was mentioned in this month's local, I think, magazine from League of Oregon Cities, coming up at the end of September, the 24th, 25th, and 26th, League of Oregon Cities is having their annual conference in Bend. I believe it's at Riverside Convention Hotel, and I attended just Saturday of last year and learned a lot just in the one day. I plan to go all three. And because of, I guess, some difficulties that they've had with different cities overbooking rooms and then backing out at the last minute, they revamped how rooms are being assigned. So in the past, apparently, you could reserve a room for the next year right after that year's conference. They changed that up so that nobody can reserve a room until July 1st. And so I've talked to, I mentioned to Pete, and said, you know, Tammy's the one that makes those arrangements, so I gave my information to her that I was planning on going Wednesday night, because they start out first thing Thursday morning with breakfast and sessions, and then on through, I believe it's like lunch on Saturday. And highly recommend that you attend if you can. First year attendees get somewhere like a $30, $40, or $50 break in the conference fee. But, and I was going to copy the information and hand it out, and I apologize. I can email it to you if you want. It's on their website, and also in that, you know, our monthly magazine we get from them. And also the weekly update, if you get that. And I'm not sure exactly what other topics, or what the topics are, I think they're still soliciting those from different presenters. So, but the 1st of July is an important date to, you know, get a room at the location. So talk to Tammy if that's of interest. Other than that, have a wonderful 4th of July next week. And stay cool.
I just went to the coffee with counselor last night as well. It was a good turnout, I enjoyed it. So I don't know if we'll keep doing it twice a month, but I think it's definitely something that we should be doing at least once a month. I think it's been very beneficial for us. And it's also beneficial just that we can keep getting out the fact that, and hopefully, Jeff, you got some phone calls today? We didn't give them your home number, but we did give out your work number, so. And I think that's beneficial for the folks that show up, that we're, we are working on some big projects and trying to move forward. So I enjoyed it. That's all I have.
The only thing I have is, I think I talked to some of you guys about this, talked to the interim city administrator, Mr. Schultz, and he had suggested that if we are in, going to start the process to look for a new city administrator, that he suggested we probably should start centering in later. I know that's kind of in line with what some of us believe should happen. So he's got kind of a draft, generally speaking, of where he thinks this might be able to go. It can go in a couple of different directions, but what I'm asking tonight is maybe for a couple of volunteers from the council to kind of spearhead this, to be part of the process. Initially, get the ideas, maybe work on a subcommittee to then further delve into the process, but initially, just to kind of get the ball rolling, a receptacle for where this information might be as far as criteria, job description, salary scale, all those kinds of nuts and bolts things, and work the process through. So that's kind of my pitch. I mean, I'll let everybody weigh in, but two volunteers is plenty, three would be awesome, and.
I would volunteer for that.
Would it be appropriate to maybe ask him to come up and give him, give us his two-minute pitch on what he sees?
Oh, I have a copy of his draft for you. Would that help? I burned a copy of it. Certainly, he's welcome to come up if he wants to talk. I think he's going to be available throughout the process. He's been through this in the recent, just recently, so he's kind of well-aware of the differences and where it can go, and where we can do our due diligence and make a good process out of it. So I'll kind of reserve it. If he wants to speak, fine. If not, I think it's best that we, when the volunteers, whoever wants to do this and start the process, can just meet him and maybe pick his brain over his draft and move on from there. So you volunteered? We got one.
I would also like to.
That's two.
I'd like to help.
And that's the third. So Mr. Johnson, Mr. Reisner, and Mr. McMahon will head up this project.
And thank the three of you for stepping up to do that.
Yeah.
It's going to be a big process.
I don't think, oh, we've got to adjourn this meeting, so we're going to adjourn this meeting. Are we going, we've got something in urban renewal, right?
Yes.
All right. So we're adjourning the regular city council meeting. We are now moving into the urban renewal, Gladstone Urban Renewal Meeting. Regular agenda, which is Resolution UR52. And again, I think this is a housekeeping thing, Peter, might correct.
It is. We're taking my name off the bank account, and we should submit Mr. Schultz in the blank and adopt.
I'd like to move that we accept Resolution UR52, adding Ross Schultz as the city administrator, and the date is correct on this one already.
I second that.
All right, motion was made to adopt Resolution UR52 by Councilman McMahon, was seconded by Councilor Mercerow. Any further discussion on this matter? All in favor of Resolution UR52 with the changes?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have passed Resolution UR52. And I believe, folks, that is it for this evening. Thank you all for coming.